Good evening, this meeting of the Jefferson County Board will now come to order. Roll call please.
We have twenty-five present and five absent.
Thank you, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Weymeyer with you, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're invited to remain standing for a moment to contemplate our service to the public. Thank you. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
We are, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like the order of the agenda altered in any way? The Chair requests that the Building and Grounds Committee reports and the Finance Committee reports be reversed, so that we're taking up the Finance Committee first. Is there any objection? Okay, with that change, we'll proceed. Next is approval of the December tenth, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes. Supervisor Renier, please.
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as printed. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Minutes are approved. Next is Communications, Plurk.
First thing, zoning committee notice of public hearing, January sixteenth at seven PM, that's Thursday. Then we also have the Treasurer's Report, which is printed in green, and Retirement Recognitions.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Public Comment. We have no registrants for Public Comment. Last chance, would anybody like to address the board on items on this evening's agenda at this time? Okay. Retirement Recognizations. We'll call that Retirement Recognizations under Public Comment, I guess, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I have a shorter list than usual for you. We only have three retirees, but with those three retirees, they served a hundred years of service with the county. Our first was Tammy Young, she was Administrative Assistant in the Sheriff's Department. Joe Namon, which many of you know couldn't be here tonight, was the Parks Director, and he was with the county for over forty years. And then we do have one retiree who made it out tonight, Scott Radloff from the Highway Department. Scott, if you want to come up? So, looking at Scott's history, he started at the Highway Department in July of nineteen eighty-eight, and as far as I know, one of the few positions who stayed in almost the same position the entire time. He was hired as the Welder Fabricator Assistant, and after about ten years, eleven years, was promoted to the Welder Fabricator position, which is what he held until he retired in October. So with that, Scott, congratulations. I did get a comment from Stacy Hoffman in Batfield, Roger is so happy retiring because he has somebody to pay his taxes.
Yes. Thank you for your service. Okay, still nobody wants to comment to the board? Mr. Weymeyer?
So before we go on, you might have noticed two boxes here behind me, so there's actually two special cakes. So one, I believe it's someone's birthday in celebration of, so seventy-eighth birthday for Supervisor Mo, so happy birthday. And then the other one is kind of a temporary parting gift. So as the board is aware, Blair is going to be getting deployed here shortly with the National Guard Unit. He'll be, this is his last board meeting until he gets back from overseas mission to the Ukraine. So in recognition and best of luck to him, we want to make sure we had something to send him off, so we have a little cake in recognition of him as well. So we wanted to do that early, so folks got a sweet taste, they can get over during the meeting. So congratulations, Blair, we wish you the best.
Well, you can head over there anytime you'd like and get a piece of cake throughout the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Weymeyer. Now, Special Order of Business, there's two parts. The first is the overview of two thousand twenty county projects. Mr. Weymeyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, we have several action items before the County Board, and based on some conversations with the various committees, this has gone in front of, over the course of the past several months, we thought it was best that we gave an overview to the entire County Board of what the committees have gone through and ensure we're in the process of answering questions if need be. And so we just kind of want to highlight the meetings related to the Buildings and Grounds Committee tonight. Part of the reason we had to flip is we need to talk about the financing, so that's why the financial package will actually be going first. And then, as we fit into it, some of the action steps and the time commitments and how we're going to manage these projects. And then the last part is the, second part of the Special Order of Business, and we talk briefly about where we're at with the Personnel Ordinance Updates. So that's when we review our project scopes, we're going to be talking about what action items we're looking at for tonight, but also looking at past action items to remind everyone what we've done to this point. And then we're also going to talk about the funding, and our consultant will be talking more about that later this evening as well. So background, as we developed the scope and gamuts of the projects that we're looking at tonight, there are many studies that took place over a course of not only the last few months, but the past several years, in some cases decades. So in two thousand five, the county actually embarked on a master planning analysis. A lot of it was geared towards the courthouse in the Sheriff's Department, but several of the other buildings were also incorporated in that analysis study. A lot was geared towards what were the space needs of the future, and some of the different maintenance issues related to this. So that was done in two thousand five, and that was a venture, architects actually did that study. One thing that I note as we go through this process was a little note from one of our board members at the time, who talked about options related to how do we advance the buildings, because if we don't take care of it now, we're kicking the can down to two thousand fifteen. So note, we're two thousand twenty. In two thousand fourteen, we also brought in a firm to kind of really look at our deferred maintenance issues and some of the capital needs of all our buildings in the county. We affectionately know of the facility dude, and that kind of outlined some of the capital needs, whether it's air conditioning units, looking at elevators and things like that, and that was part of the analysis, needs, looking at the cost of the future. Obviously, we've been looking at a lot of capital budgets, and what is that five-year trend of the needs, and the capital funding that is available for that, and can we meet those needs? Current contracts approved, an example, one of the items that we were looking at for bonding tonight, we have a contract in place for our communication system. So we will need to look at how do we keep going forward based on that contract that's in place. And then the other things that we focused in on in these conversations the last few months, we made calls over years ago, we had a task force and operations and organizations, and there's quite a bit of time now where we talked about what are our facilities and structure needs of the future, which entertained and went right into our strategic plan, and again, highlighted many of the same issues that came out in the task force. So the first item that you'll see tonight, under Buildings and Grounds for Action, is going to be entry to the contract for schematic design and engineering services. And that's focused on the courthouse and the sheriff facility, renovations. Please note, I've been asking, emphasized we're talking renovations, this is not a new bill we're looking at. So we talked through the two thousand five facility study, there's a lot of analysis that went into that. Some of those items came true, but some items did not necessarily come true. Example, one item that, as we've discussed this committees over the past few years, is looking at our jail population. Our jail population did not meet what was projected in that two thousand five study in a good way. We're below capacity in the jail right now, or actually have state inmates because of our capacity issue right now, being underneath. So that was some of the incorporation we looked at. Obviously, we talked a lot about the facility dude, but the big thing is we looked at the facility dude analysis, some of the things they said were going to break down, ironically broke down about the time they said they'd break down. And so as we looked at, we're looking at the future and looking at our structures for the future, and what do our operations need to look like, how are we prepared to be flexible in space, how do we handle security issues? When this building was designed, some of the current security practices were not a need, and those become more of a need if we look at modern day issues and concerns. Building code issues, in some cases it's come up, look at our fire alarm system and the pole stations and the strobe lights. And, no, we don't have that in our public building, and that's a concern for some members of the board. And then obviously deferred maintenance, most of the board is aware of what we went through last year, some of our HVAC systems, et cetera, looking at some issues and conditions in the jail, and how we need to make sure those things are properly called in the maintenance order. And that becomes more of a reaction to your budget, we're not trying to look ahead to the future, we're reacting to some of the issues as they come about. And so that kind of led to the issue of how do we move forward? So we're giving guidance to move forward with this issue in RFP, which took place in November of two thousand nineteen. As part of that process, we held a tour of the whole facility, we had a very widely held, attended tour, mandatory conference, so we went through from this end of the courthouse to the bowels of the building, all the way over to the jail. Captain Gray gave an overview of where we're at with the jail operations, some of the concerns. Following that, we had an opportunity for any firms to ask questions, and we provided answers to them related to those other proposals, and then we received proposals. We received a total of four proposals, one of those companies we did not interview, we went down to three interviews, and that was mainly because of the cost, their estimated cost was close to half a million dollars for this study, so they were removed from consideration. We held the interviews, I think one thing that the interview committee, who consists of members of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, along with Moss Brothers and then the Finance Director and myself, was the fact that we could not go wrong with the three firms that were finalists that you see in your package tonight. All very well qualified in various kinds of construction or renovations we're looking at, that's general government, courts, and corrections, those are three unique styles of building that you have experience in for what we're looking at. And the other thing is how they interact with stakeholders and look at how do you develop the best plan possible, and what is the good, better, best, was a common theme that we try to ask for, to look at the future of the county and the needs. At the end of the day, our recommendation is move forward with Potter Lawson, it is a firm out of Madison, they had done, did some work for Jefferson County appears in the early eighties, wide experience in various county projects, municipal projects consisting of those three items I just talked about, general government, courts, and corrections facilities. And so we're pretty happy with that. Blows the deliverables that we are expecting out of schematic design. One thing the panel asked for was to bring examples of the products we should expect, because we want to make sure when we said a schematic design, we were getting what we intended, which is a significant document, so you guys can make decisions. We didn't want to be a three-page document that didn't really answer the questions that we need to have. And so they had a very thorough schematic design proposal that we believe will help make decisions for the future, where do we go or not go. So this is the timeline, if we do go forward tonight. So we finalize contracts in January, in February, March, we work with all the departments to look at assessments, there's going to be questionnaires, walking through the tours, looking at some of their thoughts for future structures, those kind of things. In March, you'd have concept floor plan diagrams that would be presented, and then we begin to look at MEP, which is like the mechanical, plumbing issues, and as many know, we had some areas that we had to work on related to that. April, those initial preliminary designs become schematic designs, so actually working floor plans potentially, and then we start looking at costs. And in May to June is when we'd be coming back with the board and committees with some final recommendations. You'll note through this process, there are times, every single month, they will be working with the Building and Grounds Committee, or if the board desires to have an ad hoc committee. Right now, it's designed to go to Buildings and Grounds Committees, the Oversight Committee, to give updates, get feedback, and those kind of things, so the committee and the board is involved throughout this process. The next main thing that we presented in the two thousand twenty budget was the South Campus, we call it, but really it's the home of our Health and Human Services Facilities, we have multiple buildings there. And this is kind of the chart that I presented for budget presentation, showing the various buildings we are looking at, having various needs to be done at, and the ages of those facilities. And so how this came about in the process, and this is just a reminder, is as we prepared for the FY two thousand twenty budget, now, part of that process is looking at the five-year capital needs of all our departments and facilities. And as we started really working with Kathy and her team, we realized the significant needs that we had out at the South Campus. And as we looked at the cost and the ability for a capital budget to meet those needs, along with all the other competing priorities within the county, we realized we had to look at how do we do it in efficient process to get this moving. And so that's when we came back to the Finance Committee and ultimately the County Board with our recommendation that we accelerate and do a larger project of almost three million dollars to get those facilities up to date. I put the reset of capital budget, really that's to help us how we manage the capital budget of the future, as we get caught up with where we're at. As part of this process, this is a, there's a lot of moving complex pieces when you see the list of projects we're looking at. And so part of the recommendation before the County Board tonight is to hire a construction management firm to help in that process. I'm going to talk through some of those services they will be providing if we go in that direction. There will probably need to be some design work, so when we develop construction bid specs, you also typically have to have some levels of drawing, so you have apple-apple comparison, we get bids, so that is a service that we probably need to have as well if we go in this direction. So our proposed areas of work, these are examples of some of those items that we're looking at. So this includes several HVAC components that would be needed, updated and replaced in several of our buildings. Two of our backup generators need to be replaced. We'd be looking at the main Health and Human Services building, restroom updates, the building envelope, that's a significant part of that project, that includes tuck pudding, windows, new roofing, things like that, there's some degradation there, energy loss, and that's a significant part of this project, and ceiling replacement. General campus, so these are products that are throughout the campus of that map I just showed you, so this includes parking lot improvements, the sewer main needs some replacement that comes in from the main line off of County Highway W. We also have a need for additional parking lines, along with all the buildings need lighting upgrades. And then we're also looking at some air conditioning and workforce development. So construction management, when we say construction management, there's various phases related to construction management services. Some ways you can see a lot of overlap what many people, a general contractor, is probably the closest analogy if you're looking at a different kind of professional service. So there's two phases that we'd be looking at using Moss Brothers for, is who's the Building Committee is recommending to go with tonight. First is pre-construction services, so a lot of that is looking at what we're building, constructability, they have recommendations of doing something maybe a little bit differently. They're going to look at budget cost and current bid environment. Value engineering, and basically what that term is, is there a better way to do this? We utilize value engineering in several components, example, at the highway shop, this is what the architect called for, but what, if we did this, it's going to save us money, not only from a construction standpoint, but potentially also from an operational cost. When you hear the term value engineering, that's what we're looking at. They're going to help with the competitive bidding, so help assemble the bid packets, help review and analyze the bids as they come in, help negotiate those contracts. And then help us schedule. As you see, these projects are throughout the South Campus, and by the way, our Health Department, our Human Services Department, our Economic Development Department, our UW Extension Department, they have to keep operations going. And so part is ensure that we're phasing the construction that makes sense from operation, but also from a cost standpoint, because when you phase too much, there's also mobilization costs that we have to deal with. Part of this is how do we put bid packages together, so we're not doing separate buildings with HVAC, so we're doing an HVC in the main building, but then we're also doing workforce development at separate times, what we want to try to do is do those together to get economies of scale. And then construction services, so they're going to help manage, be on site and manage these projects as go ahead, working with the staff out at Human Services, specifically because they have the maintenance staff. They're going to have project meetings, we're going to talk through how we manage many of these projects coming here shortly. There will be our quality control, they're going to make sure we're getting the value that we paid for. And the other thing is just general conditions, so when we say general conditions, that's like having porta-potties out there for the construction workers. That's having trailers and updates and oversight of what's occurring, receiving equipment as it comes in. One question that came up, and this came up during the highway project, and we're looking at this being handled a very similar way, is Moss able to bid on work? So what happens is, this does not mean Moss Brothers is doing our own work under construction management, this is a professional service. All the bid packages have to and will follow the requirement of sealed bid processing. All the bids will be received by the county and will be opened in a public letting. So with that being said, if Moss Brothers, as an example, wants to do general carpentry work, they can put their own bid to compete against everyone else. So that was a question that came up by two committees related to that, so that's how this process would work. So all the actual public works part of this will follow our purchasing statutory requirements. So with that being said, how do we pay for this? And we've talked about this the last part of two thousand nineteen, but tonight, this is the first action step in moving this forward. And shortly, we turn this over to Joe Murray from Ellers, who is our financial consultant, but we have a few things that we're looking at. So one thing is the financial analysis that we did, over the course of the last several months, working with Ellers and internally, we looked at various models of how do we afford to do this. And part of what we're looking at is the mill rate, which Joe's going to talk about, but part of what Mark and I kind of looked at too is the overlapping taxing burden. And so that's not just, we understand we have a pretty big debt capacity as a county, but we also want to look at what's the impact when you look at schools, levy rates, we're looking at cities and communities, and how does it mean to the total cost to the taxpayers? So that's something we wanted to look at as we put this together. So tonight, you'll actually have two resolutions authorizing this to move forward for the sale of bonds. These will be competitively let and get the best rate we can possibly within the marketplace. Rates are awesome right now, in terms of for government bonds, tax bond. We will need a three-quarters vote, that is a statutory requirement of the entire board. So if I do my math right, that means we need twenty-three people to move this forward. So that's tonight. One of the documents you have on your desk tonight that will be reviewed is a pre-sales report, and I did not bring that up with me, but that is a document, so you can see some of the items related to how we sell the bonds, some of the technical things related to it, some of professional opinions related to what's occurring. If approved tonight and we move forward, there's some staff things that we have to work on before the sale. The biggest thing right now is the bond rating call. So every time we do a bond let, we actually get graded in terms of, with Moody's, so they look at how we manage the county, they're looking at our financial position, they're looking at our fund balances, and how we basically, how we look across the country. So we're AA two, and so when we're saying we're AA two, that's a AA two for Moody's is the same as it is in Wisconsin, as is in Texas. So it's a peer comparison, and really that's geared towards those who are going to buy the bonds and the investments. There's ongoing disclosure requirements that we have to do as part of this, it's just basically it's updated how we're doing financially to MSRB, basically it's a way for people to check in to make sure we're following what we said we're going to do, and they're going to get paid back the interest rate they were promised. And then you're going to see a thing called the official statement, and that'll be part of the final presentation when we come back in February. But basically, it's all the coverages to make sure of how the bonds are let, it's for the investors to look at, to make sure they're making a safe investment. Then in February, assuming we move forward tonight, you will confirm the sale of the bonds. So Ellers will come back in February, and they're going to tell you what rates they got, and they're going to be great rates, right Joe? And then you confirm the sale of those bonds, and then we'll close in March. So as a reminder of what we included in the budget, and it was approved in December because we did a small budget amendment, is the primary goal of the bonds that are being issued is the capital projects at the South Campus and to pay for the communications project. That's, that is what these initial bonds will finance. So, how do we manage this a little bit? So this is a very rough timeline of what we're trying to put together and some of the overlapping needs. This is a small segment of some of the other big products going on, this is all related for what we're talking about tonight. And so the top line is the schematic design work from Potter to Lawson, they're looking at this being about a four and a half to five-month process, which ideally works in terms of our timeline for looking at budgets of the future, so we'll have a report for your consideration and discussion, and then we look going into the two thousand twenty-one budget, what makes sense that the county can move forward. The next line is the South Campus, so if it is approved tonight, we'll begin to engage Moss Brothers to move forward with how we develop our bid packages in the first quarter, and realistically, it's going to take us a good chunk of the year to get those projects out the door and get them finished. The third line, the third project is the broadband, and I want to include that because there's some overlapping considerations. So we, based on the initial order for the grant, we assume we will be notified in February or March of if we're successful in getting that grant, and if so, then we will move forward with the construction phase and managing that grant and the private vendors related to the installation of that project. And then finally, is the communication project. Right now, as the board approves in December, we're working on contract negotiations and beginning of the final design work with General Communications. When has that been complete, we'll be moving forward with the procurement and the install of that project, and we're looking at that being about a year as of right now. So that's kind of the preliminary timeline. So there's going to be a lot of moving pieces, a lot of balancing how cash is flowing and making sure we're doing a proper reports back to the various committees and board. And so I kind of created a little organizational chart-based conversation with various committees. And so the top chart is really the executive project oversight. We anticipate and recommend this is going to probably be Executive Committee, the Finance Committee, and potentially joint committees managing this. A lot of this is going to be looking at how the money flows from project to project. For those who are on the board, when we did the highway project, we had several joint community, committee meetings throughout the process, whether it was what was infrastructure at the time, the Highway Committee, and Finance Committee, we had several joint committees at key decision points throughout. So that is kind of what we envisioned being that structure of getting reports with that group. Then we had the four sub-projects broken down, so on the far left is the schematic design and working with Potter Lawson, and we look at being the Oversight Committee, recommendation being the Buildings and Grounds Committee. The next line over is the South Campus facilities, and again, because of the way the contracts will be let, we're looking at that being the Buildings and Grounds Committee as the reporting committee and project status meeting. Each of these will have a committee associated with it, so we have like a team as an example for the South Campus, plan to meet with the vendors as we move forward. The next line over is the broadband project meeting, we anticipate that going to the working group. One thing that has been recommended by Executive Committee, you'll see in the updated board rules, is that group gets another two years for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two, and partly is to help manage these projects. And then the last thing is the communication project, with the reporting committee being the law enforcement committee. So part of this is making sure we have the staff in place to help manage these projects, the other thing is ensure that we have the reporting requirement back to the committees and the County Board. So in that shell, those are the big projects that we're looking for in two thousand twenty, how we're looking at financing them, what are some of the key action items that are before the board tonight, these are the four specific resolutions you have, the two for the bonds, one for entry to the contract with Potter Lawson, and one for entry to the contract with Moss Brothers. And that's all we're going to move forward, and your approval. Any questions before I move on to the other big project that's been going on? So the other big project that's been started in two thousand nineteen, and it was a goal for both the task force and one of my goals from the Executive Committee, is looking at our policies and updating them, and a big part of that is the personnel ordinance. So you have several documents on your desk, I will note, these are all drafts for purposes, but we want to start moving forward with getting feedback on that. So the first thing you'll have on your desk is Terry Palm, who was our HR Director, put together a memo, explained some of the processes that took place over the course of the last few years, and some of the things that are coming up. So as part of this process, the county engaged two consultants to help us with reviewing our ordinances, and really, we're focused on what were some of the best practices that are out there, what are some of the gaps policies we should have, or policies that we don't need, and how does that look? So our consultants were actually the former retired HR Directors for Washington County and Dodge County, they came in at a very affordable rate, but they've been very helpful with how we move forward. And so that feedback from those groups went to a management team that consists of myself, the Corporation Council, Finance Director, and HR Director, through the initial scrubbing. Once that was complete, Terry brought forward various working groups. Once that was complete, Terry brought forward various working groups. And these working groups had employees from various functionalities across the county to different positions, whether it was elected department heads to supervisors, to exempt employees, to non-accept employees, trying to get a good feedback and the various thoughts of various employees within the county. Also, part of those working groups, we had committee members from the HR committee kind of serving as liaisons. So the HR committee was aware of some of the discussion points that were taking place during these working groups. So tonight is our next step. And so we're beginning the next phase, getting feedback by the county board, but also from employees. So this big book is the recommended policies that we're looking at right now. You'll see some color codes because there's items that we continue to need to work on and get feedback on as we go ahead. And so we ask that you begin to look at this, ask questions. One thing that you'll note in the memo is, and we talked about the HR committee already, if you have questions related to this, please get to Terry to write. So in February, when we start having discussions with the board, we can be proactive and provide answers so discussions are more robust and factual at the same time. At the same token, we're also going to have the opportunity for employees to start providing feedback as well. Getting inputs of their thoughts and does this make sense or not make sense? In some cases, we've gone through this process, we have identified best practices, but when you apply it to some of the things that we need, it maybe doesn't make sense. And so those are some of the feedbacks that we're looking at as we move ahead for the future. So as I indicated, we're looking at February, really being in the discussion, asking questions, providing more information, giving more status. And then in March, potentially taking action, depending on the feedback that we receive. So there's a lot that you've been handing out tonight. There's a reason why we're not looking at this being taken forward immediately because there's a lot to digest because there's been a lot of time already that went into this from various staff and positions. So open up for any initial questions, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Again, you're welcome to bring any questions as you go through the material.
I just want to go on with what Beth said. Debt booklet, we have the funding, it's not everything. We have one other grouping of policies that are not being proposed. We're going to be starting work, I know we're getting another work group together to do that. And that really focuses on the bond debt, so we have absences. And I just wish more of the committee members, I know some of them aren't here that served on that, but they really did, the employees did a great job on here, they followed the direction. One of the things that I put out to them was if they didn't agree with something or have questions and concerns, always go back to what is the code strategic plan and what is our mission and ability of making change? Make sure that it drives that forward. And I can give you one real quick example. We were going to make a change, the group was suggesting to make a change on something and the work group came back and said, you know, that might not be the best practice out with other counties, but it's a recruitment and retention tool for us, which made a lot of sense. So we went back and maybe others proposed a lot of that. So they were very helpful and hopefully we get us constructive feedback from our employees.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, next, Mr. Ramire.
So with that being said, our next first action item tonight is going to start to talk about the two resolutions related to the bond issuance. So as I indicated before, Joe was here from Elders. He's going to quickly go over the pre-sale report. He will not go line by line, but I kind of give you the highlights of some of the processes, procedures, things that we're looking at, and then he's going to talk through a little bit about the impact from a mill rate. So Joe, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Joe Murray from Elders. My colleague and teammate is Dawn Gunderson Schiel, who you've probably seen before. But we have been working with the county as the county administrator discussed, going, looking at options and structuring, employing together some of the documents. You should have received in your packet, the administrator referred to as a pre-sale report. I will not go through this in detail, he covered everything on it more than I would probably would have myself. He's also done an excellent job of talking about the projects that you're financing. What is being proposed is to issue $7.6 million of general obligation bonds. General obligation bonds means they're paid back with tax revenue, property tax revenue. They would be issued under statute section 6704. For county debt, it does require a three-quarter vote of this board. It does require 23 affirmative votes in order to authorize the moving forward. And that's on the resolutions you have before you this evening. If you get the three-quarter vote tonight, when you come back for the sale, it only requires a simple majority vote at that time, but it does require a three-quarter vote of the full board. As the administrator discussed, one of the key steps in the process will be to get the county's credit rating reviewed by Moody's. You have a AA2 credit rating right now, which is a very good credit rating. There's only two above you. It's based on you having a strong sizable tax base, your strong liquidity, strong reserves, and extremely low debt burden. You are well below your 5% maximum general equalized value, value of taxes. Even after this borrowing, if it is pursued, you'll have only $21 million outstanding in debt. And that's a very low burden for a county of your size, so you should be very happy with that. As I said, the goal would be, if approved, we will work with staff to pull together the necessary documents for the preliminary official statement, the legal opinion, the credit rating, et cetera. And the plan would be to come back before you for the meeting on February 21st with the sale. I think if you have the report, if you turn to page seven towards the back, I think this is probably what would be of most interest to you, is the way the tax impact that we're projecting on this. As I said, right now, you've got about $12.5 million outstanding on projects. We'd be issuing another $7.6 million as part of this borrowing. If you go to, towards the far right side, you'll see that in 2020, the tax rate you are charging to pay for your debt, that's all your debt, the existing and the projected that we have, you're paying 17 cents per $1,000, or per $100,000, so that's your tax rate for paying for your debt. In 2021, we're projecting that with the rates being near historic lows, the increase will be four cents and go up to 21 cents in 2021. And then you'll see moving now forward, it stays pretty level. And this is based on conservative estimates, based on our projection for rates, and also conservative estimates as far as your equalized value growth. We're only projecting your growth of about 1.7% and in this year, you had six. So your equalized value, we've tried to do this on a conservative basis. Overall, the total cost of all $7.6 million is $10,585,000, we're projecting. That cost impact per $100,000, principal and interest over the entire 19-year term of this borrowing will cost about $140 over the entire term, per $100,000 of equalized value. That's total principal and interest over the entire 19-year term. As I said, interest rates right now are extremely low. We are projecting the true interest cost of this borrowing to come in at just over 3.115%. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the schedule, process, procedure.
Any questions? Supervisor Nass?
I just missed that. What did you say we had outstanding yet? I know it was on the highway department. How much?
You have about $12.5 million outstanding right now.
Thank you.
$12.49.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. That concludes special order of business. We now go to committee reports, resolutions, and ordinances. And as agreed to earlier, we're going to take up the finance committee slate first. So 11A, a resolution approving the acceptance of the WIC infrastructure grant, that's women, infants, and children's program, and amending the 2020 budget. Supervisor Jones, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2019...
61.
61. Thank you. An onsite State Department of Health Services Division of Public Health Women, Infants, and Children, known as WIC program, management evaluation conducted in May of 2018, consulted in a finding regarding WIC participation confidentiality. The downstairs health department clinic reception area is behind glass with three windows that serve the public for WIC, public health, and Rock River Free Clinic. The staff are not separated except for a cloth wall between WIC and the other two programs. The most recent management evaluation resulted in a finding that non-WIC staff could still hear confidential information being discussed between WIC staff and WIC participants despite having the cloth wall divider. While this has been allowed in the past, the federal state WIC guidelines now require very strict protection of participants' information. A second visit by the state WIC program confirmed that more was needed to protect participants' confidentiality. The human service maintenance director was consulted and acceptable reception area was designated to assure participant confidentiality is maintained. The maintenance director received estimates for the work. A WIC infrastructure grant was submitted and the state WIC program accepted the design. The Jefferson County Health Department WIC program was awarded funding for the full cost of the reception area remodel. Below is an estimate of remodeling costs from human service maintenance director Ryan Munt. As you can see, it's listed there as a total of $48,120. The finance committee considered this resolution at its meeting in January 9th, 2020, and recommended forwarding it to the county board for approval. Fiscal note, this is a legend amendment that increased revenues and expenditures by $48,120. County board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board. 20 members of the 30-member county board must vote in favor of the budget amendment. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to approve the acceptance of the women, infants, and children infrastructure grant and amending the 2020 budget discussion. Over roll call vote, 20 votes are required for adoption. Just a moment as we bring the voting up on the screen. Let's clear it and start over. So we have an accurate total. We'll vote again once we get that system cleared.
Votes are locked. We have 25 yes, zero no, and five absent.
The resolution is adopted. Next from the finance committee, a resolution accepting the drug-free community support program grant and amending the 2020 budget. Supervisor Jones.
Resolution number 201962. On October 30th, 2019, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy announced availability of 150 new grants for a drug-free community support program. This grant is funded through the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration and was awarded to Jefferson County Drug Free Coalition with Jefferson County as the fiscal agent. The drug-free community support program provides grants to community coalitions to strengthen infrastructure among local partners to create and sustain a reduction in local use of substance use. Recognizing the local problems, needs, and local solutions, drug-free communities funded local coalitions engage multiple sectors of the community, employ a variety of environmental strategies to address local substance use problems. The drug-free community support program is a proven prevention program aimed at the prevention of drug, alcohol, and tobacco use among youth, which is essential to the success of a healthy future for youth. The total federal grant award is $125,000 with additional $125,000 matching required paid by Jefferson County. The Health Department is requesting these grant funds to be accepted by Jefferson County to support the drug-free community support program commencing January 1, 2020. The finance committee considered this resolution at its meeting in January 9th, 2020, and recommended forwarding to the county board for approval. Fiscal note, because this grant supplements currently funded salaries and benefits in the Health Department's budget, acceptance of the drug-free communities grant will result in net savings of $85,227 in levy funding. As a budget amendment, county board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board. 20 members of the 30-member county board must vote in favor of the budget amendment. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to accept the drug-free community support program grant and amending the 2020 budget discussion. Over roll call vote, 20 votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now from the finance committee, an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $7,600,000 for capital projects. Supervisor Jones, please.
Resolution number...
23.
Okay, it's still 2019? Be resolved by the county board of supervisors of Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to chapter 67 Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 7.6 million for the public purposes of paying the cost of capital projects consisting of communication projects and county building projects. Adopted, approved, and recorded January 14th, 2020. Jim Schrader, chairperson. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to approve an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,600,000 for capital projects. Discussion. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on this three-quarter vote of the entire board. 30 times point seven five is 22.5. 23 votes are required for adoption. Roll call vote, please.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
Resolution is adopted. Finally, from the finance committee, a resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $7,600,000 general obligation capital project bonds, series 2020A. Supervisor Jones, please.
Resolution number 64. Whereas the county board of supervisors of Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the county has adopted an initial resolution, the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 7.6 million for the public purpose of paying the cost of capital projects consisting of communication projects and county building projects. Whereas the county board of supervisors hereby finds and determines that the projects described in the initial resolution are within the county's power to undertake and therefore serve a public purpose, as that term is defined in section 67.04 sub-1, sub-B, Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the county board of supervisors of the county hereby finds and determines that general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 7.6 million should be issued pursuant to the initial resolution. Now, therefore, be resolved by the county board of supervisors of the county that section one issuance of the bonds. The bonds authorized by the initial resolution will be designated general obligation of capital project bonds, series 2020A, the bonds, and the county shall issue the bonds in amount not to exceed 7.6 million for the purpose above specified. Section two, sale of the bonds. The county board of supervisors hereby authorize and directs that the bonds be offered for public sale. At a subsequent meeting, the county board of supervisors shall consider such bids for the bonds as may have been received and take action thereon. Section three, notice of sale. The county clerk in consultation with the county's financial advisor, Elders and Associates Incorporated, Elders, is hereby authorized and directed to cause the sale of the bonds to be publicized at such time and in such manner as the county clerk may determine and to cause copies of a complete notice of sale and other pertinent data to be forwarded to interest bidders as the county clerk may determine. Section four, official statement. The county clerk in consultation with Elders shall also cause an official statement repaired and distributed. The appropriate county officials shall determine when this official statement is final for purposes of Security and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12, and shall certify said statement, such certification to constitute full authorization of such statement under this resolution. Adopted, approved, and recorded January 14th. Adopted, approved, and recorded January 14, 2020. Jim Schrader, chairperson. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to provide for the sale of not to exceed $7,600,000 general obligation capital project bonds, Series 2028. Over roll call vote, the arithmetic is the same. Twenty-three votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now we'll go back to item number 10. Building and Grounds Committee with a resolution entering into a contract with Potter-Lawson to provide schematic design and mechanical assessments for the Jefferson County Courthouse, Sheriff's Office, and Jail. Supervisor Payne, please.
Resolution number 201965. I won't read the executive summary since Administrator Ameyer did a thorough job explaining this resolution. I'd just like to point out Potter-Lawson is the lowest bidder at $77,000. Fiscal note: the funding for this contract will be comprised of a combination of carryover amounts from the jail plumbing project, $136,200 remaining in the vacant maintenance direct position in central services, fully benefit at $105,237, and proceeds from the issuance of bonds. The finance director is hereby authorized to make the necessary budget adjustments for the enactment of this resolution. This is a budget adjustment. County board approval requires a two-thirds vote for the entire membership of the county board. Twenty out of the thirty-member county board must vote in favor of the budget amendment. I motion for approval of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to enter into a contract with Potter-Lawson to provide schematic design and mechanical assessments for the Jefferson County Courthouse, Sheriff's Office, and Jail. Discussion. Supervisor Christensen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just noticed that it's called a budget adjustment, and elsewhere we talk about usually budget amendments. Is that a distinction without a difference, or what does that mean?
We'll turn to Corporation Council. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but we'll get the definitive word.
It's a budget amendment.
It's a budget amendment.
Thank you.
We'll consider adjustment and amendment to be synonymous. Thank you for the question. Further discussion. Roll call vote, twenty votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
The resolution is adopted. Also from the Building and Grounds Committee, a resolution entering into a contract with Moss Brothers to provide construction management services for upgrading and repair of county buildings. Supervisor Payne, please.
Resolution number 201966. Again, fiscal note: this resolution approves the authorization of a fee amount not to exceed $250,000 should actual costs for construction management for projects relating to the Health and Human Services Building, Leader House, Hillside, and Workforce Development Building exceed $40,000, $50,000, and additional review of the progress of projects under management will be required to proceed further, including authorization of additional estimated fees. The funding for this contract will be comprised of a combination of carryover amounts from the jail plumbing project, the vacant maintenance direct position in central services, and proceeds from the issuance of bonds. The finance director is hereby authorized to make the necessary budget adjustments for the enactment of this resolution. This is a budget adjustment. County board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board. Twenty members of the thirty-member county board must approve in favor of the budget amendment. I move for approval of this resolution.
Second. Moved and seconded to enter into a contract with Moss Brothers to provide construction management services for upgrading and repair of county buildings. As a budget amendment, twenty votes are required for adoption. We'll have a roll call vote, please. I'm sorry. Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little, I know that I've been touched on it, but the situation where Moss would be supervising their own part of the project? Doing inspection on that as well? Construction inspection for the project as well?
Mr. Weimeyer, please.
I think there's one difference. If they would be awarded bids, we'd probably look at a third party to help with review of that work. In a case of when they perform work at the highway shop, if you recall, we also had a company called the Sigma Group who was our own representation. So the case is a point where that work had to be reviewed and accepted, and Moss was the winning bidder, we had a third-party verification. So we'll make that decision once we determine if Moss is a little better in those project scopes.
There could be some additional costs at that point.
Potentially, but not knowing if they're going to get in the bids yet, we'll continue to work with the committee and advise them accordingly as we move forward.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I saw another hand up, perhaps? Over roll call vote, twenty votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now to the Human Resources Committee with a resolution reclassifying the vacant CCS yes supervisor position to mental health professional position in the Adult Comprehensive Community Services Team at Human Services. Supervisor Broglie, please.
Resolution number 201967. The CCS yes supervisor position was originally created in 2015 and fully funded through the federal SAMSH grant. This position serves young adults ages 18 to 25 who are severely impacted by mental health and substance abuse issues. The need for this position exists more now than ever and continues to be 100% funded through CCS Medicaid billing. However, since the specific grant funding in the program no longer exists, the position continues to serve young adults as mental health professionals. The Human Resources met January 14, 2020 and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board to reclassify the full-time CCS yes supervisor position to full-time mental health professional position in the Adult Comprehensive Community Services Team at Human Services. Fiscal note: the CCS yes supervisor position and the mental health professional positions are of the same pay grade. The mental health professional position is 100% funded with CCS Medicaid billing. Therefore, no additional tax levy is required. This resolution amends the classification of authorized positions presented as part of the 2020 adopted budget. The county board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the board, twenty votes of the thirty members. I move for passage.
Moved and seconded to reclassify the vacant CCS yes supervisor position to mental health professional position in the Adult Comprehensive Community Services Team at Human Services. Roll call vote, please. Twenty votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now a resolution eliminating a full-time community support program professional 1, 2, 3 position and creating a full-time community support program clinical coordinator position at Human Services. Supervisor Broglie, please.
Long executive summary, great time to go get some cake. Resolution 201968. Jefferson County continues to experience an extremely high caseload of individuals with severe and persistent mental illness and acute nature that faces profound challenges in the major areas of community living. The goal of the Community Support Program, CPS, is to help these consumers remain in the community while enhancing the quality of their lives. However, the community service program has seen an increase in consumers from less than 30 consumers in 1998 to nearly 150 consumers in 2018. Therefore, the Community Support Program is mandated and regulated under Chapter DHS 63. Specifically, the regulation indicates that for every 20 clients or every 40 hours of direct service with a CSP, the clinical supervisor shall spend at least four hours a week providing supervision. The Community Service Program has one clinical coordinator position that is overall responsibility for and provides direct supervision of the CSP's client treatment services and supervision of the CSP clinical staff. This severely limits growth of the program to only 160 consumers and creates extreme challenges during the absence of one position. Therefore, to remain compliant with the regulations to provide the appropriate level of service for consumers, the Human Service Director is requesting the elimination of one full-time community support professional program 1, 2, 3 position and the creation of one full-time community support program clinician, clinical coordinator position. The clinical coordinator position will maintain a small caseload as well as provide the hours of clinical supervision mandated, allowing more consumers to be admitted into the program. Additionally, positions in the community support program are funded 60% with Medicaid funding and only 40% tax levy. The Human Resources Committee met on January 4, 2020, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board to eliminate one full-time CSP professional 1, 2, 3 position and to create one full-time CSP clinical coordinator position at Human Services. Fiscal note: the annual gross difference between a full-time CSP 1, 2, 3 position and a full-time CSP clinical coordinator position is an increase of $3,920.86 and a tax levy increase of $1,568.34. With the ability to admit more consumers, the increase in the program revenue will exceed the increase of tax levy cost. Therefore, no additional tax levy is required. This resolution amends the classification of authorized positions presented as part of the 2020 adopted budget. County board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board, 20, 30 members. I move for passage.
Wow. Excellent pacing on that reading. Looks like everybody had a chance to get some cake who wants. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to eliminate a full-time community support program professional 1/2/3 position and creating a full-time community support program clinical coordinator position at Human Services. Over roll call vote, twenty votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. 25 yes, zero no, five absent.
Resolution is adopted. Finally, from the Human Resources Committee, a resolution terminating participation in the State of Wisconsin Deferred Compensation Program.
Resolution number 201969. November 2, 2019, November 12, sorry, 2019, the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors approved to change the 457B Deferred Compensation Plan Provider for Jefferson County employees and retirees from Nationwide Retirement Solutions and Wisconsin Deferred Compensation to One America into contract with Wells Fargo as an independent 457B plan consultant to provide certified financial planning advice to county employees related to their 475B plan investments. In addition, the board approved to cease future 475B deferred compensation contributions to Wisconsin Deferred Compensation, but allow employees' current contributions to remain within the plan. On December 26, 2019, Jefferson County was notified by the State of Wisconsin Department of Employee Trust filing that a specific Wisconsin Deferred Compensation termination resolution needed to be approved to begin the removal process. The Human Resource Committee met on January 14, 2020, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board to begin the process to cease future 457B deferred compensation contributions to Wisconsin Deferred Compensation, but allow employees' current contributions to remain within the plan. Fiscal note: costs associated with the employees' 457B deferred compensation plan, including services provided by the independent 457B plan consultant, are paid entirely by employees. There is no fiscal impact to Jefferson County. I move for passage.
Moved and seconded to terminate participation in the State of Wisconsin Deferred Compensation Program. Discussion. Get to have a voice vote this time, folks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Now to the Planning and Zoning Committee with a report on approval of petitions followed by the ordinance amending the official zoning map. Supervisor Massey, please.
Report to all members of Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee, having considered petition for mandatory zoning map, Jefferson County public hearing held on December 19, 2019. 2019 is required by law pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Knowledges thereof having been given me due leave with advised wishes to town boards in persons affected area make the following recommendations. Approved petitions, numbers as listed below. Date is 30th day of December 2019, Blaine Paulson, Secretary. Ordinance number 2019...
Fifteen.
Fifteen. I move for the adoption of this ordinance as printed.
Moved and seconded to amend the zoning map, the official zoning map as printed. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The map is amended. Now appointments by the county administrator. Mr. Weimeyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By authority vested in Section 9.18, P2, P2b of the Wisconsin Statute, I respectfully request confirmation of Dr. Mark Rolison of Jefferson, Wisconsin, to Jefferson County Library Board through a three-year term ending December 31, 2022. I respectfully request confirmation.
Moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The appointment is confirmed. Now public comment of a general nature. Would anybody like to address the board, including on items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, announcements? Are there any announcements? Supervisor Christensen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought I would let the board know that last night was a town of Sumner board meeting, and at that meeting there was a resolution which called for overturning the county's approval of the Valia Septic Holding structure. That resolution failed, and so Valia will be able to go ahead with the plan that we discussed last month here.
Thank you for the update. Any other announcements? Mr. Weimeyer, please.
All right, so this is a calendar notice to get far out. So as we're concluding, getting to looking at March, that's the conclusion of this term of the county board. And so in April, as everyone's aware, we'll be having elections, and the organizational meeting, as a reminder, is the third Tuesday of the month at 5 o'clock. We're doing that because every other entity has to have their annual meeting, organizational meeting, the third Tuesday month as well. So this allows, folks, we're going to township municipalities and make those meetings as well. As part of our past practice, we're going to continue to have orientation for the county board as a whole. We'll be holding that the second Tuesday of April, on April 14, starting at 6 o'clock PM in this room. We're going to be covering a wide variety of topics we've been discussing with the executive committee. One thing we're going to be doing a little bit different this year is I'm going to have a pre-orientation meeting as well, and it's going to be kind of a Jefferson County one-on-one, so we're going to kind of do an overview of the budget and the organizational chart of the county, especially for new county board members, so they have that understanding for those who might be a little more seasoned. But that'll be open to everyone who wants to participate in as well. So again, that'll be on April 14. We'll have a pre-meeting roughly around 5:30, followed by the full orientation at 6:00. And then as a reminder, the third Tuesday at 5:00 for the organizational meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection? Or adjourned? Thank you.